The city of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for an accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call (866) 270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at (866) 270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at (847) 599-2997.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, I mean, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 21st, 2016 Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Nussum.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Bishop Colburn.
Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting, and thank you for our mayor, his compadre, his entire administration, and thank you for the president. Now that the election is over, as now as past, we pray for the outgoing president, we pray for the incoming president. We need a quiet, peaceful life. That's our community, that's all of our citizens. May we be followers of the old church.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There will be no mayor's comments, we're running a little bit late. Minutes. Item A, motion to approve the regular minutes of November 7th, 2016. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Resolutions, proclamations, presentations, appointments? Item A, Waukegan Main Street presentation. Art?
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, council members and audience. Please join us this Saturday in downtown Waukegan through the states and small businesses Saturday. What a wonderful way to end a holiday weekend by shopping for various businesses, visiting the sand, and watching how they build at the Jefferson Theater. We have a shopping mall, and a $50 gift card. Mayor Robinson, which is best, if you like, this is a big, big, fantastic place. And just thanks to our sponsor, North School Paint. For information, watch on the Saturday, it's right back where I'm located, the office on 6766. Thank you, Art.
The next item is the presentation of the Waukegan Beauty Pageant winners. A week ago, I had the privilege of attending this event. We had, as many of you may not know, we haven't had a beauty pageant in Waukegan for several years. We've not had a representative to represent our community through the county events, and so we held a pageant. And I have to tell you, the contestants were all worthy of winning this beauty pageant. They were all very bright, very articulate, and very impressive. Unfortunately, some lost, and three won. I picked the three myself before anyone else did, and I was right. I said, "Girls, I was right." But I'd like to introduce to you our beauty pageant winners. They're very bright young ladies. They're going to represent our city with pride and dignity, and I'm very so proud to introduce to you little Miss Waukegan, Miss Sanchez. Would you please step up front here, ma'am? Junior Miss Waukegan, Miss Caigos. And Miss Waukegan, Miss Mendoza. Ladies, if you'd like to have, if you'd like to speak into the microphone, because you're going to have to get used to this, because you'll be doing it quite frequently. They had the, they did attend Art Walk. Did you have a good time? Good. So, if you would, please, take the mic and please speak to the audience and to the city council. The mic is right there, right behind you. Take it off. What's his name? It's Art.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Mendoza, and this is also my first meeting, and it's a pleasure to be here. I'm very excited to hear what everyone has to say.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anna Marie Sanchez, and this is also my first time at a council meeting, and I'm very nervous. But I think everyone is very excited.
Thank you, thank you, ladies. Ladies and gentlemen, I can tell you, my daughter had the privilege of being Miss, little Miss Waukegan, Miss Waukegan, and Miss Illinois 2004. And I can tell you, young ladies, you're in for a real treat. You're going to, you're going to see and do things you can only imagine, and I'm looking forward to seeing you smiling every day and representing our community with the pride that I'm seeing tonight. So, thank you very much. Next, George Bridges. I'd like to present to you the Fire Chief George Bridges. You've looked at the agenda, you know what's coming up, and I can, I can say with, with all due respect, that our fire department has made this community proud worldwide. Our young men, well, not so young anymore. George, not you. But I can tell you, this, what they've accomplished is absolutely amazing. To go through this rigorous competition with firefighters worldwide and finish this, and this, with a result like this, it's astonishing. George, please.
All right, all right. I'm kind of nervous all the same. All right, Mayor, Council members, for all of you today, um, I don't know where the department you got, um, I don't know. Have you found your Waukegan? But we have another tool for firefighters, for your paramedics. There's more, when you have more firefighters that die on cancer, then actually guys who play fire, you guys are very interested in our testament to the importance of how the priority is placed on fitness and training, okay? I would like to introduce you guys, you guys come on up. We've got Nate Skew, we've got one coming up. Firefighter Nate Skew, we have firefighter Tom Lawson, Lieutenant Tony Silver, firefighter Al Greenlaw. Then we have our friend, Alderman. We have, I want to make sure that we're not, because we have nominated midwest region over 20 years. This nomination started with Joe Horvitz, he did not belong in this, Scott, firefighter now at Jones. And then we had Lieutenant Laura Hadeen. She was a multi-year world champion. And then in 2013, we became the over 40 world champions, okay? Where I'll meet with that is that last year, I introduced these guys to you as the 2015 national champions, okay? They went to, what was it, Farmer Franch, Farmer Franch, uh, Farmer Franch, that's the last year, and became the 2015 national champions. I'm proud to let you know, they went to Reno, Nevada, and they are your back-to-back 2016 national champions now. The next best team, they beat by 20 seconds. That's the next, and we have won and lost by less than a second, great region. They beat the next closest team by 20 seconds. And, you know I'm going to do this to you, I'm going to point these guys out because they deserve it. Nate Skew, the second fastest man in the nation at this event. I want to tell you, because that is outstanding, but there's more. Although I'm going to look like a mermaid. 2013, we were the over 40 relay world champions. 2014, we took second place, okay? 2014, but in 2015, we came, we went back out, competed, we were the 2015 world champions in the relay, and we set the world record that year. This year, I'm happy to tell you, in October, we went to Montgomery, Alabama, competed in the world championship, and we are again your back-to-back 2016 world champions in the over 40 relay team. Maybe I'm very important, but I got the mic going on. You hear my part of the word. I have to make sure that you guys know other noteworthy things of these guys. Tom Lawson, second from the left, he was fifth over 840 in the world. Nate Skew, yeah, absolutely. Nate Skew, our first gentleman there, our firefighter, the seventh fastest in the world. And after this is done, we're going to watch this video, and it's only less than a minute and a half, okay? We own, tell me if I'm wrong, we own every state record for Illinois. Most of them.
Individual.
We own every one. We're all on the chief. We own most, all Illinois records, okay? So, one thing that I wanted to touch on that also was, out of every one there, over 1,000 competitors, we have them from Canada, Kuwait, Germany, everywhere. Out of all of them, Waukegan is number five in the world. You guys must know that, if you call 911, you have a team of these guys waiting at the state, or your herd, okay? These guys deserve a round of applause. I just want, for, I know we may have comments from our council and our mayor, but I just want to show this video, because these guys put in a lot of work to make this happen. We have to do a fire department physical fitness each year. Every shift day, your firefighter will work out for a minimum of one hour. These guys go above and beyond that. That's why we are special, this whole entire region, if we have been ranked in the world. All right, and if you can see, this is, this will be Nate Skew running this individual. He's on the right hand side. G P is on the right in this, in this video. Nate doesn't like the blue.
See?
Wow. Thank you.
Nate Skew.
Many wonder why I'm so proud and so passionate. I got 120 of these guys. So, thank you, God.
Here's some, some, please. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I have to tell you, that being a retired policeman, I'm still proud of you, gentlemen. But, gentlemen, I'm very proud, and believe me, I know what it takes to do and do. I've seen it, I've seen it in action, and to do this toward you and bring this back to you, you have put us on the map. We got our city and fire department to be right with, worldwide, for that, I say thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor. Old picture. Hey, can we get a picture of the line? Say your word, all right?
Your line. George, under the picture of the young lady, she can get her. This guy's leaving here. This is what I like exactly. Before we go any further, I neglected to say something in mayor's time, and I like to say that now. Many of you know that the issues in, the occurrence of the Grand Avenue Bridge deficit and the Sharon Road deficit, those happened under my watch. I take full responsibility for those actions. The grants were not written during my tenure, they were written in an administration prior to mine, but at the end of the day, I'm the mayor, I assume full responsibility for those, for those, the lack of, of the money on that part. So, what I've done, as I've met with Noel Kishler-Lepper, who does our, writes our grants and helps, she basically does everything for me, and Tina McGelisky, our finance director, and we, we are instituting, as of today, a new grant policy, a new procedure for grants. So, now, we'll be able to track the grants from the inception of the grant to the completion of the grant, to make sure what happened on Grand Avenue and what happened on Sharon Road never happens again. We will not lose track of our money again. So, basically, what happens now, is when a grant come in, when a grant comes in, it's identified, we identify the grant. The grant is taken before the mayor and the finance director. The grant is, if it's determined it's reimbursable, or what the required measure is, the department will then apply for the grant. The grant will be approved by the agency, and if the grant is over $20,000, it will be brought to city council for approval. Hopefully, what happened, the error that happened before, will not happen again. Tina, thank you so much. Noel, thank you, and Corporation Council, thank you for your input. Alderman, I think you've got a copy of this today. Please look at it, and we'll take it from there, we'll talk about it a little bit further. So, thank you for that. Okay. Next on the agenda is the proclaim Saturday, November 26th, 2016, Small Business Saturday. Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Villalobos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Maria, do you have the proclamation?
Yes. Whereas government of Waukegan, Illinois celebrates our local small businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of the businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 63% of new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas small businesses employ over 49% of all businesses with, with employees in the United States. Whereas 87% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to their all, their overall economic health of the United States. And whereas Waukegan, Illinois supports our local businesses and creates jobs, boosts our economy, and preserves our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed that Saturday after Thanksgiving is Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim November 26th, 2016 as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses, emergence to Small Business Saturday, and throughout the year, dated this 21st day of November 2016.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Economic Development Committee. Alderman May, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Economic Development Committee met this evening, and I'm sorry. And we were presented by Edgewater Resources with the final beach management plan. This is a working document for the city of Waukegan that will help us make decisions on, on the sand and the natural areas, while protecting the habitat and conserving the high-quality dunes that we have in our city, to permitting on how we can move sand and how we can take care of our beaches. The group, this is a 100% grant-funded plan that tells us how to really take care of our beach and how to go through the proper authorities when we need to move sand, whether it's the Army Corps of Engineers, the IDNR. So, it's a document that I think the mayor and I are really proud of, we've been working on it for a long time, and hopefully, we'll get unanimous approval tonight. So, the motion is, the Economic Development, Development Committee recommends an ISO move to recommend to the city council the approval of the Waukegan Beach Management Plan prepared by Edgewater Resources.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussum.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have, Your Honor.
And I'd like to say thank you to Alderman May. I know she's a proponent of the lakefront. Her and I worked very, very well together for almost two years, was it Lisa?
Yeah.
Almost two years to get this plan. It is our intent to make the lakefront good for the environment, good for the habitat, and we want people to utilize our lakefront. So, please, if you have an opportunity, get down there this summer and utilize it, because it's, it's turned into something very wonderful. Next is the Finance Committee. Alderman Velco, please.
Thank you, sir. The Finance Committee met this evening, and the first item on the agenda, A, they voted to approve the program year 2017 Community Development Block Grant, commonly known as CDBG, the allocations as presented. And for those of you in the audience that are going to view later at home, CDBG has nine stakeholders, a participa, participation panel, and there was 23 applications this year asking for money. I'm not going to name them all, but some are. A Safe Place, Catholic Charities, The Cool Ministries, Elder Care, the Northern Illinois Food Bank, excuse me, Pads of Lake County, Prairie State Legal Services, totaling $117,000. The city of Waukegan also was recipient for, their money went to code compliance, infrastructure improvement, which was sidewalk improvement program, emergency and substantial rehab and rehab administration, for a grand total of $784,000, 784,212. Again, the Finance Committee voted to approve, and ISO move, sir.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
And to do this talk and bring this back to the city, you have put us on the map. We got our city and fire department to be right with worldwide for that, I say thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you Mayor. Old picture. Hey, can we get a picture of the line? Say your word, all right?
Your mind. Joyce, under official of the young ladies. This guy is giving you a big. This is what I like exactly.
Before we go any further, I neglected to say something in mayor's time, and I like to say that now. Many of you know that the issues and the occurrence of the Grand Avenue Bridge deficit and the Sheridan Road deficit, those happen under my watch. I take full responsibility for those actions. The grants were not written during my tenure, they were written in an administration prior to mine. But at the end of the day, I'm the mayor, I assume full responsibility for those, for those, uh, the lack of, of, um, the money on that part. So what I've done, as I've met with Noel Kisher-Lepa, who does our, writes our grants and helps, she basically does everything for me, and Tina Smigelski, our finance director, and we, we are instituting, as of today, a new grant policy, a new procedure for grants. So now we'll be able to track the grants from the inception of the grant to the completion of the grant, to make sure what happened on Grand Avenue and what happened on Sheridan Road never happens again. We will not lose track of our money again. So basically what happens now is when a grant come in, when a grant comes in, it's identified, we identify the grant. The grant is taken before the mayor and the finance director. The grant is, if it's determined it's reimbursable or what the required measure is, the department will then apply for the grant. The grant will be approved by the agency. And if the grant is over $20,000, it will be brought to city council for approval. Hopefully, what happened, the error that happened before, will not happen again. Tina, thank you so much. Noel, thank you. And corporation counsel, thank you for your input. Alderman, I think you've got a copy of this today. Please look at it and we'll take it from there, we'll talk about it a little bit further. So thank you for that. Okay. Next on the agenda is the proclaim Saturday, November 26, 2016, Small Business Saturday. Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Villalobos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Maria, do you have the proclamation?
Yes. Whereas government of Waukegan, Illinois celebrates our local small businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of the businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 63% of new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas small businesses employ over 49% of all businesses with, with employees in the United States. Whereas 87% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to their overall economic health of the United States. And whereas Waukegan, Illinois supports our local businesses and create jobs, boost our economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed that Saturday after Thanksgiving is Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim November 26, 2016 as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses, emergence to Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, dated this 21st day of November 2016.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the Economic Development Committee. Alderman May, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Economic Development Committee met this evening, and I'm sorry. And we were presented by Edge Water Resources with the final beach management plan. This is a working document for the city of Waukegan that will help us make decisions on, on the sand and the natural areas while protecting the habitat and conserving the high-quality dunes that we have in our city. To permitting on how we can move sand and how we can take care of our beaches. The group, this is a 100% grant-funded plan that tells us how to really take care of our beach and how to go through the proper authorities when we need to move sand, whether it's the Army Corps of Engineers, the IDNR. So it's a document that I think the mayor and I are really proud of. We've been working on it for a long time and hopefully we'll get unanimous approval tonight. So the motion is, the Economic Development Committee recommends an ISO move to recommend to the city council the approval of the Waukegan Beach Management Plan, prepared by Edge of Water Resources.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussum.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have, your honor.
And I'd like to say thank you to Alderman May. I know she's a proponent of the lakefront. Her and I worked very, very well together for almost two years, was it Lisa?
Yeah.
Almost two years to get this plan. It is our intent to make the lakefront good for the environment, good for the habitat. And we want people to utilize our lakefront, so please, if you have an opportunity, get down there this summer and utilize it because it's, it's turned into something very wonderful. Uh, next is the Finance Committee. Alderman Valco, please.
Thank you, sir. The Finance Committee met this evening and the first item on the agenda, A, they voted to approve the program year 2017 Community Development Block Grant, commonly known as CDBG, the allocations as presented. And for those of you in the audience that are going to view later at home, CDBG has nine stakeholders, a participation panel, and there was 23 applications this year asking for money. I'm not going to name them all, but some are. A Safe Place, Catholic Charities, The Cool Ministries, Elder Care, The Northern Illinois Food Bank, excuse me, Pads of Lake County, Prairie State Legal Services. Totalling $117,000. The city of Waukegan also was recipient for, their money went to code compliance, infrastructure improvement, which was sidewalk improvement program, emergency and substantial rehab and rehab administration, for a grand total of $784,212. Again, the Finance Committee voted to approve and ISO move, sir.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alder Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussum.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, the committee voted to approve a contract with Cayenta to program and interface between Cayenta Utility, the water and sewer billing, and Professional Meters Incorporated, commonly known as PMI, the automated meter reading system for an amount not to exceed $53,430. And this is coming out of budget code 555-916027693. And for the aldermen that were not here, as well as again, as the citizens in the audience, Cayenta is a program that Waukegan uses and this, this program that they're asking to interface with it for $53,000 and change, is when, you all know, that most of you know, hopefully, that we've gone into wireless meter reading systems now. And will this what will be able, for the information from the wireless could be uploaded and stored in analytics to review each time they read the meters. I've been informed that they will be able to use this hourly data and analytics to better answer customer questions about water usage and run standard reports to identify leaks and theft. Again, sir, the committee voted to approve and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alder Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussum.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Insurance Committee, Alderman Taylor, please.
Thank you, your honor. The insurance committee met tonight at 6:47 and we have decided to table this claim indefinitely. And so it will not take a vote this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor. There is no old business, reports and communications, there are none. New business, item A, approval of payroll dated November 10, 2016 in the amount of $1,462,1753. And PBL C-Holly buyback dated November 10, 2016 in the amount of $21,764.54. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alder Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussum.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated November 21, 2016 in the amount of $11,846,436. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussum.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item C, approval, approve the use of Urban Edge for a private wedding on Saturday, April 8, 2016, from 1:30 PM to 5:00 PM.
Should be 17.
I'm sorry.
Should be 2017.
Oh, 2017, I'm sorry. From 1:30 PM to 5:00 PM. This event is approved event. In addition, the register, register has applied under the directive for a non-city governmental use of city-owned properties, buildings, and venues, and has paid all costs required by that directive. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussum.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Your honor, before you go on, a question for you. Now, are we going to be now using the Urban Edge building for these types of rentals in the future? And if so, do we have anything, like agreement written up, a lease or?
We do have, we have a legal document. We were utilizing these, this building without that. We now have a legal document assigned, corporation counsel drafted, and we allow them to use our venue. They have to pay a fee, so yes, we will be doing it in the future.
So this is something we're going to be ongoing and trying to?
Yes.
Question, mayor.
Yes.
So do we have, like, insurance coverage on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And liquor license is okay on that?
They have to, they have to provide their own license. If they're going to serve alcohol, they have, they have to have their own license.
That's a BYB then, right, mayor, they come to you for a BYB?
Event license.
Oh, event license. Yeah, but the event license still have to get a legal approval from.
Does the money come back to the city then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Any more questions on that?
No.
Item D, approval of the raffle sale application of the Saronites Bowling League. Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Seager. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item E, accept and place sign and file the treasurer's monthly report for October 2016. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item F, approval of the honorary street sign for Joe Taylor intersection of Norman Drive North and Waukegan Road and Norman Drive South and Waukegan Road. This street is a semi-circle. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Villalobos. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? There are no ordinances and resolutions. Audience time, please, madam clerk.
Margaret Carrasco.
Mayor, if there's one thing that can be said in the city of Waukegan, is that we have the best police chief and the best fire department chief. Therefore, tonight, mayor and city council aldermen, the Latino community, businesses, DACA college youth, hard-working families, immigrant families and organizations, we propose that Waukegan become a sanctuary city or it can be called a different name because our community right now, many residents are living in fear, fear of deportation. And especially, we're concerned about what, what may happen after January when President Trump takes office. We would like to have some type of resolution, authorizing policy, where our residents can be assured that they will not be subjected to any type of harassment or walking, they can safely walk the streets of Waukegan. This mayor designation in writing would mean that the Waukegan municipal employees, including police, would not ask people about their immigration status during calls for service, traffic stops. There would be no roundup of undocumented immigrant families on behest of Homeland Security, or as we call them, MIGRA. We need a policy that would allow undocumented immigrants to contact, freely contact law enforcement officers when they've been a victim of a crime, domestic abuse, or witnessed a crime, to work together, to continue working together as we are presently with both the fire and the police department. Cities such as Chicago, Los Angeles, New York, Philadelphia, and Boston are already sanctuary cities and have an agreement with the community in writing. If you recall back in 2012, under the former mayor Hyde, when the 287G was approved here in Waukegan, that resulted in thousands of innocent people being deported. Were truly concerned about incidental deportation that occurs when immigration goes to a house looking for a criminal and find out that person no longer resides there and despite that, demand documentation from any person residing in the house when they're innocent and have no record and then are subject to deportation. We even had an incident in Waukegan on a domestic call where the officer demanded papers from the victim. Mayor, we, we expect your support.
Next, please.
Thank you.
Ivan Brasic.
Good evening, members of the council and residents. As you know, I've been across the street from the Pads facility now since they've moved in and we've seen changes occur, occur over the years here with changes to our neighborhood, to our facility. We've invested some additional security in our building and we are under the understanding, we've come to know that, that there's going to be some requests here for some conditional use prod, ordinance changes to allow for them to have change to the facility for its use. I have to say that when, when this first began, the service was supposed to be intake-only administrative office. We all know that there's more than that that's been going on. Our business has, I don't want to say tanked, but certain aspects of it have. We used to have 1,100 square feet of yoga, 20, 25 of our patients and community residents would come, we'd have people coming in from Libertyville. Lady that was teaching our yoga class was a high-quality instructor who works with the McCaskey family and personally teaches the McCaskey family yoga. Over a week's time, from 20, 25 residents or attendees, we went down to one. And that was a police officer because he wasn't intimidated by four or five individuals surrounding him and asking him for change, or cigarettes, or whistling, or harassment. Much of the changes that have occurred are because of the facility not fitting in our community, in a residential area where we have children and small business. We, on a daily basis, people walk into our facility, which is a chiropractic, physical therapy, and podiatry office. We're constantly being harassed for money, jobs, odd jobs that they can do. The service that Pads provides is a much-needed service. But to allow that service to grow into servicing residents with other hygiene and personal use, I think may be stepping beyond what, what administrative offices are supposed to do. They're supposed to process the residents. The bus that comes out and picks up the people parks in the middle of the street. It's not parking in their parking lot. We cannot leave our office without possibly getting into an accident. It's.
Thank you, Mr. Brasic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Regina McIllopp.
I'm Sister Regina McIllopp and I'm a member, I'm a resident of the 7th Ward and a member of Clean Power Lake County. Mayor Motley and members of the city council, we are here tonight to invite each one of you to the event, Sneak Peak National Geographic Spotlights, Clean Power Lake County. The event is on December 4th at 3:00 PM. During the event, we will be previewing the episode from National Geographic TV series, Years of Living Dangerously, in which the city of Waukegan will be featured on the, on a national scale. Now, the Years of Living Dangerously, as I said, is a TV series that focuses on climate change. And this particular episode, which will, the full episode will air on Wednesday, December 14th, will feature interviews with Mayor Motley and with other Waukegan leaders, as well as the Clean Power Lake County group that journeyed to our capital in Springfield. And there'll be other significant events. Clean Power Lake County has received RSVPs from elected officials across Lake County. They include the newly-elected congressperson Brad Schneider and Lake County Board Member Diane Hewitt. And we're very grateful to Alderman Sam Cunningham and Alderman David Villalobos and city clerk Maria Lacor for them already responding, that they will be there. So I hope all of you will come and join us at this event on December 4th. For more information, you can contact Celestia Flores. And I have a flyer for each of you, so thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Brother Blanks?
Brother Blanks, Black Abolition Movement for the Minor. I, I like to appeal to our 1st Ward alderman and to ask that our 1st Ward alderman definitely be mindful and aware as this 1st Ward South Side Development Program move forward. Particularly since, you know, our ward was disrespected by first making an effort to have you excluded. And the reason I say that, I would like for you to be watchful because there's a term, which I'm sure many of you are aware of, it's called gentrification. And much too often, when we have big businesses moving into communities that are already struggling under the auspices of Lake or South Side of urban development, usually what happens is the taxes goes up, it becomes unaffordable for many of the citizens and homeowners who are already struggling to live there. So those are some things that I would definitely like for you to be mindful of and to be aware of because we do not want our 1st Ward coming to the point where it is unaffordable for the community who are already, already struggling. So if you're really interested in developing the South Side, I would like to see some of that CD, uh, uh, community block grant development money that you're using to help buy up property. Maybe we can use more of that money to help invest in homes that are already struggling there. Because when you're buying up property from the community opposed to putting lots of that money towards helping to develop it, it makes me question just how interested are you in, interested you are in developing. Next, when we look at, so I, you know, I'm kind of leery there. Next, when we looking at what we are proposing as for as the documents that were signed last week about the $500 empowerment or police accountability, if you will. I didn't really get excited because this is not the first time that this city and this mayor, who was a city clerk at the time, signed documents that were supposed to be holding accountable during in the best interest of the citizen. Because if you can recall, under the $500 empowerment, which myself and Ms. Margaret Carrasco was a part of this suit, we also had agreements from this city and with this mayor, who was on a part of that suit at one time. But yet and still, even after signing those documents, we have had citizens who have had their viol, had their rights violated, their First Amendment rights violated right here in this city council. So I, I don't get excited because it's one thing to sign a whole bunch of papers and it's another thing to be, it's another thing to be accountable. I see you're watching the clock, my time ain't up yet. It's another thing to really be genuine and sincere in making these things happen. Because so, once again, we had the $500 empowerment where documents were signed and everybody was all excited, but we ended up, and you did what you were supposed to do then. And I don't really think you have intention.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Thank you.
Clyde McLemore, please.
Hey, the mic working. Good evening, council members. My name is Clyde McLemore. I'm here for, uh, chairman for the Lake County Chapter of the Black Lives Matter Movement. You know, the holidays is coming up. Thanksgiving is be this Thursday. And I always grew up with a turkey on my plate. So what I'm doing is, I'm asking y'all, we doing a turkey giveaway. One free turkey or a ham to one family. This will be held Wednesday, November 23rd, at the Market Inn at 2723 Sheridan Road. The Lake County Chapter of Black Lives Matter is giving away some turkeys and we asking that if you council members would like to be there. We gonna do it at 6 o'clock. If you'd like to donate, you know, give a turkey or a ham to a family, we ask you to come. If you don't think you can come and do it, my number is 847-344-2540. I will come and pick up the turkeys or ham if you'd like for me to do it and pass them out in your name, in your name. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Dolores Santana. Dolores.
Good evening, mayor and the council, city council. This is my first time ever doing this, I'm kind of nervous. But I think it's very important that as a citizen of that as a, a citizen of Waukegan, a homeowner in Waukegan, that I do come out and express my personal concerns regarding the PADS facility, a facility that is definitely well-needed. I support that, um, the idea of needing one, um, because I'm very involved in my church and think, and believe that all men, all people have the right to the necessities of what they, they, in order to continue living as a, uh, of a community. But as in the past, I've expressed that the location of this facility, I believe is in a residential area on a dead end next to my house. I cannot express to you, and forgive me if I get emotional. I've been dealing with this since it's opened, with no communication from anyone that it was coming. I do work for the Waukegan Public School District, and I see a lot of it coming through as well. The buses that Dr. Brasek is talking about or has talked about, it's, it's dangerous out there. I'm concerned for the kids. As a single mother, raising her own children, or have raised her children, under those circumstances, I cannot tell you the surmounts of different things I've had to personally experience from public urination, indecent exposure, drunkenness in my own yard. I've had to invest in, I, I don't have much money. I'm a single mom. I had to invest in some type of security system. I have two dogs now. That's the best I can do to protect myself, my young daughter, and my two sons, and my I've heard that there's some type of thing going on, that they're going to petitioning to see if they can open for showers and maybe lockers. I'm not understanding everything, but I know that's out in the works. I'm asking you to consider, don't treat me or the immediate neighbors in that area as what I've been once told as casualties of war. It hurt me knowing that I pay taxes, knowing that I am a citizen, and that I'm being treated as a casualty of war. There's got to be a better answer than opening up a place where they can come, you know, originally was opened up for just intake services. I cannot tell you, to this very day, I worry every day. I can sit in my beautiful front picture window and still see the activity that's out there that should not be happening. That facility said they were going to do A, B, C, and D, and still have not come forth. They have purchased that second parking lot where I live, and I can tell you, it's not been done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie O'Meara?
Jamie O'Meara, 1318 Chestnut Street. I would like to thank the aldermen who presented resolutions to be voted upon tonight, that they explained them. I've come here the last few meetings requesting that for the audience, and, um, you know, I'm not able to make the committee meetings, which is when all the good stuff happens. So I'm really happy and pleased that you took, um, took that into consideration and allowed the, your residents to know what you're voting on. So thank you.
Ralph Peterson?
I was asked to speak on this matter. I was going to speak on it anyway, but last night I attended a Chicagowest dinner, and the conversation was about bullying and disrespect. And it was brought up last week, Alderman Cunningham, how you publicly, and these women were upset, humiliated Reverend Ezell Robbins. They also stated that this is the second time, and I'm stating this too, in months that you've yelled and chastised Mr. Robbins. And on one occasion, you even threatened him by saying, "Five votes got you in office, and five votes will get you out of office." Well, I learned a little bit about Mr. Robbins last night from these ladies. I was told that he has served this city for over 20 years. Much of his block grant work has been in the First Ward, where he is desperately needed, appreciated, and highly respected. I believe I speak for many when I say we don't appreciate the way you're treated, Mr. Robbins, nor your tone in general. And I and others feel you owe Mr. Robbins an apology. I'm going to offer you some advice. We are still people who respect men of God, and we despise black politicians who disrespect them. And Mr. Reverend Angelo, I'm glad you're here, because I was also scolded. For the 10th time, I'm going to apologize to you again. I told them that I've called you so many times and apologized, I believe you changed your number because of that. Okay, now, real quick, um, why, why I'm not pleased with your rejection of my compromise offer, I am not surprised by the lack of concern when it comes to the taxpayers' money. I'm speaking to the alderman. I filed four charges, civil rights violations, four out of five. I have one left, and I will be filing that. Why, why, first, I want to say I could have asked for three times the amount of money that I'm asking for. Why am I settling for less? I'll tell you why. Because Mayor Motley and myself, I've had a chance to discuss, we have had a chance to discuss our differences. And besides, I don't want to place undue hardship on the city, and because I've also seen you, Mayor, and I scream it out loud, I've seen you roll your sleeves up and respond to every matter brought before you within this city, and I'm forced to respect that. And lastly, I would like to say, I see that it is easier to voice problems than it is to be a part of the solution. Well, Ralph Peterson plans on doing both. Now, to a couple of you aldermen, I know this is a political season, and some of you are trying to make this about Mayor Motley, what we're going through. I am letting the citizens know in advance, when this thing blow up, I'm going to name the aldermen who are responsible.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to make a comment before the aldermen speak. Tonight, we have seen some young ladies and some firefighters who represent the best of our community. These people are living, are living demonstration of how vibrant our city is. We have so much to be thankful for. This holiday season, while you hear bad news and negative information and predictions, keep in mind that we have a wonderful, we have a wonderful city, many things are happening, and we have many amazing people who love our community and the city of Waukegan. I wish each of you, and every one of you, and hope, and joy, and love on this Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you. Alderman Cunningham?
First, I wanted to congratulate those, the graduates of the Community Emergency Response Team. That is the volunteer group, as I say, Chief Bridges, the volunteer group who helps out the, the fire department in various situations, when there are structural fires, they need help, help with families and things like that. What they went through was an eight or nine-week course, Chief?
Yes, eight-week course.
Eight-week course, and on, you know, on various things. Now, I was supposed to be a part of that, however, I didn't know it entailed all of that, but my mom told me today to make sure I said thank you to all those volunteers and, um, and from the fire department, those who helped out. So congratulations to them. I think Bruce Kennedy was one of the, one of the graduates, and former alderman Tom Conken.
James.
And James, what'd you, that's right, it was, I'm sorry. And she, I was supposed to be the bandage man, wasn't I, Jamie? There you go. Kudos go out to the Waukegan Public School District for their Think HBCU College Fair. I had a chance to attend that, and wow, I tell you, Waukegan Public School District has come a long way. You had HBC colleges, historically black colleges and universities, who were actually there. Angelo Tuskegee was there. Your roommate, Mr., uh, Mr. Bobo was the representative for Tuskegee University. And it was, it was very surreal to watch and see the historically black colleges and universities throughout this country represented at the Waukegan Public School District. So kudos go out to, uh, the Public School District. I think their partner was the ladies of AKA, JIC Ministries, Exxon, and, and I think a host of others. So that was a great job to, to witness that. Christian Fellowship, I'm sorry, Christian Neighbors Church, I want to thank them for the ravine cleanup that the, this past weekend, Pastor Luke and his entire congregation was out doing that. I normally don't try to respond to, uh, to comments from, from individuals, however, I want to be very clear that we should always be respectful of everybody. Last but not least, Second Annual Hat, Scarf, and Glove Drive. The Hat, Scarf, and Glove Drive, and the reason we do hat and scarf and gloves, because most people get a lot of coats for the winter, they donate them. But in the middle schools, in the elementary schools, kids will always lose the hat, the glove, and the scarves. So we're going to do a hat, Second Annual Hat, Scarf, and Glove Drive. Three churches are going to be participating. My own church, which is Greater Faith Church Baptist, Christian Neighbors Church, and, uh, and I'm second, there's two churches. The last one is the Father Gary Graff Center. It's going to be a bin located there, you can drop off or give me a call, and I can drop those items off. We're going to start, uh, November 27th and end December 31st. So hat, scarf, and glove drive. Thank you.
Alderman Seager?
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a safe one. And Chief, you've got an outstanding fire department. Number one, again. And that guy next to you, we got a good police force, too, Chief. Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I'm sorry.
Alderman Moizio?
Yes.
Alderman Villalobos?
First, I want to start off by saying, it's great to see so many people in the audience. Progressively, more and more people have shown up to these meetings, which is a great thing to see. I see a couple of the faces here, some friends here. Wonderful, so glad. So thank you, first of all, for your time, for being here with us today. Uh, next, I want to bring up Clean Power Lake County. For those of you, my colleagues here, that are planning on going and RSVPing yet, please do so to the events. It's going to be, uh, it's going to be a nice, Sneak Peak National Geographic, the actual, the actual episode airs on December 14th on National Geographic Channel, which I believe we are going to be in the season finale episode for Years of Living Dangerously for that season. So please, um, come join us Sunday, December 3rd, sorry, Sunday, December 4th at 3:00 PM. Also, one of the great things about this position is the great, the wonderful people I get to meet, the network and opportunities. I had a woman reach out to me, well, mutual friend. The Community Activism Law Alliance received a, received a grant, which is to allow someone from their, from their organization to come to Waukegan and Lake County to offer free immigration law. So this woman's name's Priscilla Orta. She is partnering right now with Mano Amano and ACES. So if you know anybody who wants free legal advice regarding immigration law, that's a great resource right there. Had opportunity to speak to her. Also, want to bring up again before, so we don't forget, Waukegan Public Library. We need to support our library and support their endeavors, the, the seeking of the funds. Again, these are, these are staff members that put together the programs, that put together the activities, that put together everything that helps our community out, helping kids learn, helping adults learn. Again, without the staff, without them, all the great work wouldn't be possible. Also, I had the opportunity to meet with and help volunteer with a new church in the Fourth Ward. It's City Reach Waukegan. It's Pastor Alex Soller, and he got together. So the old Joe Leggett Architecture Building on Chapel Street is going to get used by City Reach Church, and before they even get their doors open, they did a bring your, bring your own rake event, and they raked the entire block on Chapel Street from Washington to West Clayton. It was a nice event. It was very nice of the pastor to reach out to his community members, got to meet a couple of neighbors already. So it was great to see that and be part of that. Also, there was, uh, moving forward with the Washington Street Corridor Plan. Barb Cornu and Dan Persky from Town Square Consultancy are keep working on this project. We were able to meet with the principal of Abbott Middle School last week to discuss how Abbott Middle School can help bring students together with the corridor, particularly the bike path, and help the students get more engaged into their community and take ownership of that space. So that's going on, going forward. It's great to see that happen. And then we have, last two things. Chief Bridges, congratulations to your gentleman. Wonderful job, way to represent Waukegan, so proud. And lastly, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Hope you all enjoy your, your Thanksgiving with fam, family and friends and those near and dear to you. Thank you so much.
Alderman Newsom?
Thank you. Congratulations, Chief, and the Firefighters Combat Team on their awards, national titles, and all the accolades. They represent Waukegan very well. And to our Miss Waukegan, Junior Miss Waukegan, Little Miss Waukegan, congratulations, ladies. And then I want to announce that the Home for the Holidays fundraiser benefit is going to take place next Friday, December 2nd. And this is a fundraiser benefit for the Statement House and the Eddie Washington Center, which are homes for the homeless. Statement Houses for women and children, and the Eddie Washington Center is for men. It's going to take place at the Chevy Chase out in Wheeling. If anyone is interested in sponsorship opportunities, you can let me know. For tickets, you can also let me know. And then, um, I wanted to touch a little bit on this PADS issue that's come to the forefront again. Several months ago, I spoke passionately regarding the PADS, and it's come up several times during, uh, audience time. Prior to PADS coming to that location, my constituency did not have an opportunity to voice their concerns, even find out exactly what was going to happen. The building was just donated to that spot, to PADS. Since then, a much quiet neighborhood has turned into me getting constant calls all the time about something going on in that neighborhood. When I came onto this council, I committed to my constituency that I would be their voice on this council, and I will continue to do so. Within the next couple of weeks, I will go door-to-door to every business on that street, Grand Avenue, and every resident, those that have contacted me and those that have not contacted me, to find out what their concerns are. When PADS was presented to this council, it was presented as a resource center. As time went by, we found out that other things were happening at PADS, which were probably what PADS usually did, but not at that location and not in a business district. So to add all those things into this location is just, is just hard to accept for the residents that live there. Sure, PADS is needed. All the resources that you give to the homeless, they're needed. But when we in Waukegan get all of Lake County residents bought to 1,800 grand, it presents a problem. It's just too many, too many people. It would be different if we were just taking care of Waukegan residents at that location. So within the next couple of weeks, I'll be going door-to-door. I'm always open to talk to you, Joel. We've met with different meetings, we've talked about the plans, what we were going to do, and how we were going to go for. If that facility was conducted in a manner where the residents or the businesses would even, not even know that... even, not even know that it was a PADS shelter, it would be totally different. There's homeless shelters all throughout Waukegan, several in my ward. You don't even know they're there. I've never received a call. So I think we have to work on, if PADS is gonna stay there, we gotta work on. I don't know the answer. I'm open. I'm praying. I'm working with my constituency and the businesses. We have to come up with a solution. But to expand, I'm not sure if that's the right thing to do at that location. So, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. That's all I have.
Alderman Tempest?
Thank you. As we approach Thanksgiving, I think people need to give thanks that you are American and you live in the United States of America. And it's very, very important that we keep our founding fathers as we give thanks for what a great nation we are. And I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman May?
Thank you. I also want to congratulate the queens and the firefighters. Great job, everyone. You girls did great, so don't be nervous. Mayor, I'm really happy to hear that grant policy has been put in place. I think that was important and needed, and I appreciate that when you see a problem, you do address it. And you've shown that several times over and you showed it again tonight by introducing the grant policy to us. So I appreciate that very much and want to thank you for that. And on the lakefront beach management plan that we approved tonight, that was another more, further evidence that even though sometimes we may disagree up here, that we can work together. And the beach management plan is evidence of that. It might be not as exciting to everyone as it is to some of us up here who work on lakefront issues, but they put together a roadmap for us for future development, for future care, for future programming of our lakefront. So it really is an important guiding document for this council. So thank you to the council for supporting that. PADS. So I listen to everyone talk about PADS and I just have to believe in my heart that we're gonna find a way to make this work, that we're gonna find a way to have PADS operate in the community and still serve the clientele that really need their services. I believe if everyone's diligent and put together practices, best practices for running that facility, I have to believe in my heart that there is a way that that can work without disrupting the neighborhood. I respect the residents and the business owners' complaints very much, and at the same time, you know, your heart goes out to people who live on the street and are trying to get a leg up and need a shower. So I just pray that with Alderman Newsome, I will continue to check in with her to keep me abreast of the situation, but I just hope that we can find an agreement so that this facility can continue its services without impacting the neighborhood negatively. And on that, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Alderman Belko?
Thank you, ma'am. The Doug Taylor that founded the PADS, Ms. Carrasco.
Ms. Carrasco has come up here once or twice and spoken rather eloquently on the problems incurred in front of her house, and then on Grand Avenue, and then at a couple of the restaurants. And is a strong, not proponent, to go against what's proposed at the PADS facility there. I don't want to call it a shelter. The young lady, I assume that you live on Indiana, man. You didn't, but I assume the dead end is there on Indiana, right off of where the doctor is. Doc Braesik, I don't know if you remember me, sir, but I sure remember you when you first came to town and you were on the south side of the street there, and then you moved to the, and shortly before, you had triplets, sir? You had triplets. You worked hard, you worked your way up, and then you moved across the street and you became a thriving business there. And I can, I have sympathy for you for what's been going on here. And I can tell you in open forum here, you've got somebody in your corner here, Ms. Carrasco, the young lady who lives on Indiana, and yourself, doctor, 'cause I don't like what's going on. I saw it happen before at Belvedere and Genesee Street years ago, and I think PADS left in the late 80s, early 90s, and then they went to the VA Center in North Chicago, and now they're back again. I didn't like it then and I don't like it now. So you have a strong individual in your corner here. I would like to also wish a good Thanksgiving to everybody, a safe Thanksgiving. My final comment is, we heard tonight about the Waukegan Fire Department, how great they are, two years in a row, chief, is that correct? World champion records and everything. The only thing I can say to you, and I'm sure my constituents will ask me, if something happens, they can call the Waukegan Fire Department, they don't have to call Jimmy John's. Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Alderman Taylor?
First, I'd like to remind my ninth ward that your next leaf pickup is Wednesday, November 30th, or Thursday, December 1st. I want to also thank Public Works and Advanced Disposal for doing a special Saturday pickup in my ward. They were not able, Advanced Disposal was not able to get out to all of the places last week. Because of the amount of leaves that we had, they were behind. And I have to be honest, there was a lot of leaves in my ward that were not taken to the curb correctly. They were left in the middle of the street. And I'm talking about six, seven-foot piles. We cannot do that if we encounter rain or snow, which we can get any time right now. That will block the roads. Please rake the leaves to the curb and the curb only. Do not dump them in the street. I want to thank these beautiful, young Waukegan beauty queens. You're amazing. Thank you for taking the opportunity to let the community see, not only are you beautiful on the outside, but you're beautiful on the inside. Thank you to the Waukegan firefighters. The community is just now finding out what amazing men and women these are, but let me tell you, they've been my champions, my world champions for a long time. Last, I want to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Please take this opportunity to reach out to your family, to your friends, share a meal, show them respect and kindness. This is the time to take that opportunity. Thank you so much.
Most adjourned by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Post, meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
The city of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call 866-270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo. The PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at 866-270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at 847-599-2997.